Six thirty-four. And just so everybody know that these meetings are broadcast live and also digitally recorded. So we'll start with open session and we have some folks from Street or Road here, so we'll open it with them.
They are on the agenda.
Oh, they are on the agenda?
Yes.
Under new business, yeah.
Under new business, we'll just move them up.
Yeah, why don't we just move them up then? So anybody here for open session? Okay. Actually, it's a good idea. Jeff will do some announcements and then we'll take Street.
Oh, so announcements, there's a rabies clinic going on on Saturday, March second, from one thirty to three P M. It's at the Gardner Animal Shelter. I do have information up online. It's open to all different areas. They do have a few notes. It's a twenty dollars per vaccine and they're offering a free microchip as well. And then the St. Patrick's Day breakfast is gonna be held in the senior center. I went last year, it was a great time. They were all dressed up. So it is donations. There's no cost, other than, like I said, whatever you wanna contribute. They're gonna have a good menu of scrambled eggs, sausage, toast, fruit, they said, home fries, coffee and juice. So that will be Saturday, March sixteenth, from eight to ten. And then the other thing is the Country Hen Scholarship applications. Deadline to apply is thirtieth. I know there'll be other scholarships coming out, but this is the one that is done by the Board of Selectmen. So if anybody has questions, they can contact me directly and, you know, apply. It's free money, so it's always nice.
Free money is always good. Alright, so we're gonna skip over our new municipal building options discussion, because we have a bunch of folks from Street or Road here. You're always obviously welcome to hear what's gonna be presented afterwards, but we figured, well, we'll bring you up and further discussion about what's going on.
Well, thanks for having me again.
Absolutely.
I'm sure I'm gonna have a chair with my name on it pretty soon.
If you could just state your name for the...
I'm Deb Reed from Street or Road. So I asked to be put on the agenda because I took note of the last meeting that the select board had, that there was some concern talked about over the culvert on Street or Road. And I believe, Mr. Williams, you were the one who sort of initiated that concern. Because in your packet that night, you had these pictures. You had a complaint letter from the occupants of forty-one Grimes Road. So I wanted to address your concerns. And I apologize for the fact that this is a very small screen that you're gonna be looking at. But I did take some pictures of the culvert, so that you would be able to see what condition the culvert is in. I actually thought this was quite a good picture, because you can see that the water is open and actually flowing in this picture. So I have a thirty-second video that you can watch. That shows not only the flowing water, you just hit the, you don't have to do that. Not only the flowing water, but also the pile of Bieber debris that we regularly clean out from that culvert. So it is not clogged, was not clogged. And you will see that that actually goes across the other side to the pond, where the water is open and not frozen, like the rest of the pond is, because the water's been flowing on a regular basis.
Yeah, I think Jeff's concern was we've gotten a letter, from one of the residents, that they wanted the town to take care of it, but it's private, so. And that's what you guys are doing, taking care of it.
We've been taking care of it on a regular basis. You are probably aware that the Concom is really the ones who would be addressing this issue. And we have been to the Concom as well. We have an order of conditions that we follow regularly. The other thing that I just wanted to point out to you, which is something that you all already know, is that this part of the layout had gotten narrowed in this section of the road. This is where the culvert is. You're not going to be granted any of the water. So therefore, you will not be concerned with the culvert. Now, it's private, or if the road should become public, you will not have any access to the culvert. You will simply have an easement for the top of the road. You will not own the fee of the road, which means you won't have anything to be concerned about with the culvert. And the fact that this got narrowed means, again, you have no access to the culvert. Okay, so the one other thing I wanted to show you, this is a top graphical map of Hubbardston. Sorry, should've had it opened up, ready to go. This is Lovewell Pond. This is Grimes Road. This is Street or Road. Here's where the pond is. Here's where the culvert is. Here, right at the base of this really huge swamp, is where number forty-one Grimes Road was built. So the water that is an issue on their driveway... This is high elevation. Their house is built at the low end of the swamp.
And the drainage of the swamp isn't towards the pond. The drainage of the swamp is towards the house.
Exactly. Exactly. So I hope that covers the concern, even, not only now, because of course you have no concern about it now, but even in the future, again, should the road become public, it is not going to stay.
The culvert, this culvert remains private.
The culvert will remain private. Yes, it will.
But if the, that's kinda s- um... So if the fail, if there was a failure of the culvert, the town wouldn't be responsible, even if it's under the road, or...
Right, because you don't own the fee. You will never own the fee to the road.
You don't own the what?
You don't own the fee of the road, which is actually the base of the road underneath. You're just gonna have an easement to travel the top of the road. That's it. There's the difference between getting an easement and actually owning the fee of the road.
So then to Jamie's point, if anything happens to the culvert, that falls on you people? Jeff just saying, basically?
That falls on Lovewell Pond Association, because they own the pond.
Even if the town has taken the road and...
Exactly. But the other, you know, but it is regularly maintained. My next door neighbor goes a couple times a week. My husband goes a couple times a week. We drive by it every single day. My other neighbor, Pete, checks it out regularly. And Mr. Romano, who is here with me tonight, was also part of the replacement of the culvert, which was done.
So if there was a failure of the culvert under the road, then who would be responsible to repair the cul- to excavate the road and repair the culvert?
Lovewell Pond Association, because the culvert belongs to them.
So none of this is the taking the... Just to make it clear, none of this is to take the ownership of the drainage or anything else on that. It's just simply the traveled part of the road.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep. And again, that's why this was narrowed, so that you would have no access to the water. And clearly, the culvert is under the road and in the control of the water, so.
Yep. Sounds good.
Okay?
Yep.
And then you had also asked a question about why, you know, there's a letter that was attached here. It was from two thousand eleven. Like why the town hasn't addressed it, but you recognize it's private and so, and it's something that the Concom tries on a regular basis to try to address, so. Any other questions?
There's still a letter here that wants to know why the town has not responded to a two thousand three letter.
Which, which the Concom has. If you actually had information from the Concom, which I don't expect that you would have, but here's a letter right from them. You know, this one's from the night, the January, February twenty-ninth, where they were invited to come to the Concom to address their concerns, and they didn't show up. And I know they didn't show up, 'cause I was there, so. So they try to address the concerns, but can't really address them if people don't show up, so.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you for your time.
I think some others we might...
Yeah, no.
No? Any, any else from the folks from Street or Road?
I'd like to say something. I'm here, my name's Peter Russell. Live at twenty Street or Road. You know, just to Debbie's point about the culvert. I also represent the Lovewell Pond Sporting Club Incorporated. I'm the president of that corporation. And I think it's important to note that the Lovewell Pond Sporting Club was not issued the order of conditions that replaced the culvert when it was done most recently, what, fifteen years ago? So we're not legally responsible to do the cleaning. The club is not. It's the Street or Road residents that have been maintaining that culvert and not the Lovewell Pond Sporting Club. The Lovewell Pond Sporting Club has participated and contributed, just like all the other owners on Street or Road. I think it's important to note that the attorneys, as we go through this process with the, with the road, if it gets accepted at the town meeting and the rest of the goes through, that the attorney's gonna have to structure the language of every deed that conveys the easement to the town. And I think that the ownership or the responsibility of maintenance and operation of that culvert will get worked out in those documents. So, you know, I just wanted to speak up for Lovewell Pond Sporting Club, that I think there's still some verbiage that needs to be worked out by the attorneys.
By your attorneys? You're talking about specifically as opposed to the towns?
Yes, well... Well, I think that it'll be a collaboration between Town Council, the Street or Road Attorney, Attorney Phillips, and the Lovewell Pond Sporting Club's Attorney. Or, and I would think that any other abutter on Street or Road that wants to hire an attorney to make sure that the language in the deed, the easement deed to the town is, is what they wanted to say.
Protecting them too.
Yeah, so, you know, Lovewell Pond Sporting Club is one of twenty-five abutters on that road. So, you know, we happen to feel as though we've got, you know, a unique interest, given that we own the pond, and, you know, we're, we've hired council to guide us through this process, supporting the process, but also looking out for the Lovewell Pond Sporting Club's interests. People on Street or Road may have their own personal interests as well. I think everybody's on board. Obviously, we've, we've got essentially unanimous participation in this process up to this point, so.
Okay.
Good?
Good.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so next we'll have our presentation on new municipal building options.
So this is Greg from HKA, now has a face. This is the architect firm that we engaged to talk about municipal building options. If you remember, from the fall, the board wanted to investigate what we would call four options. So that would be a combined municipal complex, a public safety, town hall combination, and then a public safety building plan. So basically updating costs and investigating what these would look like. Fourth option being not to do anything. So Greg's here to take over what they found.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you for having me. I did put a quick presentation together. If you don't mind, I'd like to walk up to the screen. It's easier to point. As Ryan's putting that on there, one of the things we always try to do when we start a project is come up with kind of concept and approach that we take. Next slide, please, Ryan. So we talked about the intersection of the three pillars of the community, basically being safety and security, governance and administration, and experience and participation, because we believe that all of those are key functions in making a successful community town, I mean, community. And what we tried to do is reflect this in the building. So what we were asked to do is, we came out, I met with some of the department members. We had a working session as well after we created a concept plan. Then we got feedback on that plan. Ryan met with me again to give me additional feedback. He's been giving feedback. And so what I've been done is, I was asked to put together various plans. The first plan I will show you is what we originally set out with. And right now, if you're familiar with the site, you have the road, Gardner Road access, and then the site actually drops quite a bit. It doesn't seem like it, but as you move back, there's probably about a fifteen to twenty-foot drop on the site. Again, with the distance and being clear, you don't really notice that. So what it made sense to do is actually to stack the building. Obviously, the trucks and vehicles and stuff belong on the gray, ground floor. And then the other portions of the buildings could be put on top of that. One of the ideas there is obviously minimizing the number of, the footprint of the building on the site, which obviously saves costs, 'cause you're not putting in additional foundations and everything. As well as it seemed to segregate the program requirements of the building very well. And also, because again, I know that all towns, not just Hubbardston, are conscious about costs and everything, one of the objectives was also trying to eliminate the need for an elevator in there. Because just maintenance on an elevator on an annual basis is about eight to ten thousand a year, even if it's a brand-new elevator, 'cause you have to pay for those service contracts. So what you'll see in the plan is, even though it's a two-story building, the building is fully accessible and there is no need for an elevator in there. The other thing, too, that I've always tried to do as far as the design approach that we do is, the places where the public engages the building, sees the building, touches the building, is really where the money should be spent, okay? And then what I would refer to as more of the, you know, back of the house or the service operations, become just more durable, you know, low-maintenance, you know, cost-effective approach. And that's what we're trying to reflect in this plan. So again, this was the original layout. This first floor was about seventeen thousand square feet. This primarily consisted of the public safety operations. Down at the bottom would be Gardner Road, you know, and again, this portion of the building would be in gray. You'd come down and around the site. Over here would be access for employees getting into the public safety building, the fire and police. Up on the corner there would have been the vest to be able to get in for the general public. And then obviously, the vehicles come up and then turn on to Gardner Road. Next slide. Above that would be the senior center and the town hall. This was the senior center area, selectmen, town hall. And then at the time, there was a discussion about having a large community room that could seat like a hundred and fifty people, that could also be used for meetings and everything. After meetings and stuff, that kinda seemed to go away. There were some nice things that people liked about it, but there was concerns about how often that would be used and whether it was needed or not. So the next slide, and this is the one we'll focus on most, is the option number one, as we refer to. Again, in this case, public safety is on the lower level. This is Gardner Road. There'd be some cool storage records, mechanical rooms, obviously the truck bays. And then over here would be primarily the quarters for the police and fire crews. And when I say that, there would be like a day room, fitness room, lockers, functions like that that were typically required. Those individuals could come upstairs, next slide. And this is basically what the public would access. They would come in through the front entrance. There'd be what we call the Hubbardston room. Over here would be the community room, so you could have selectmen meetings. This could be open to like the Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, and other activities during off-hours. It's directly connected to the senior center, so this entire sector of the building would be senior center. There's a senior activity room, a restroom for support, 'cause I understand that some seniors may need some assistance when using the facilities. There's a small kitchen there, office, and a lounge, so that, you know, seniors could come and drop in, and they can participate in their activities. As you come into the main building, that would be the reception for the town hall, town offices, common bathrooms. There'd be a large meeting room here, two smaller meeting rooms here. And then you need two means of ingress from buildings and everything, so this would be the second means of ingress. But that would also serve as the entrance for public safety. There'd be an admin support right there. And then this would be police and fire offices. As you know, the lower portion would be the quarters. And then over here would be the Sallyport, as well as some holding cells and a canopy truck area. Next slide. There was a discussion of, you know, budgets, and we'll get into the budgets. This is not preferred, and hopefully nobody gets excited when I say this, but one of the options is, well, you know, how could you put this building assembled differently? And that was a discussion about putting town hall and public safety. So you'll see that public safety, pretty much the same as before. Next one. The town hall, public safety, admin and everything is identical, which would give you the option to put on the senior center at a future date. Nobody's suggesting that, nobody's recommending that. That was just one of the options that we were asked to look at. The reason we did that is it provides flexibility to the building, so that if budgets or other concerns, where you could only build these two components of the building, you could eventually add on the senior center at a future date and take advantage of the economy of scales that the existing building would already have, as far as mechanical systems, fire protection systems and things like that. Next slide. And then the last option that we were asked to look at is just one public safety building, with no other operations in that. And again, what you'll basically see is, you know, this would be just a one-story building. Public can come in over here. There'd be the offices and things, the quarters, day rooms, truck vehicles, Sallyport and holding cells. So that's basically the plans of the building. And the reason I showed you that first is just to give you an idea of the direction that the project moved in. I was asked to focus now on putting the entire complex together, calling it the municipal center, which would include public safety, town hall and the senior center. Next slide, please. You're probably all familiar with the site. That's the general location of the site, Gardner Road. This is what we would propose for the site. This is Gardner Road down here. So you come down, the general public would come in through here, either park here or come down, drop people off. Senior center's clearly defined, town hall's clearly defined, public safety is clearly defined, and then they could come out. Approximately seventy parking spaces were requested for that. Over here would be the police cruisers under shelter, as well as a small garage portion that would be for the Sallyport. And again, those are procedural issues that the police would need to do. And then over here would be the access road for the fire equipment to come out. And then you pick up another twenty parking spaces along there, if you choose. The other thing, too, is we, you know, propose dedicating a green space, so that if you want to put up monuments or memorials or any other type of structures like that. Next slide. So what we've done is some renderings of what we, you know, potentially the building can look like. So this would be, as you move along Gardner Road, again, I talked about the three pillars. Each of the components of the building has a voice on the street. This would be the senior center, town hall, public safety. Next slide. This would be, if you were coming to the senior center or the town hall, you'd pull off, either pull into the parking space or you'd pull under the port cochere, drop people off. We find that that's very helpful, especially for the elderly in icy conditions and everything. I know that we've also done the Groton Senior Center, and one of the things that they liked about is they have a van. And currently, they're paying to park the van in a garage area. They're excited now that they can park the van at night underneath the port cochere and not have to worry about ice and snow and everything getting on that. One of the other things, too, if you remember at the beginning, I said, put the money where the people enjoy it and see it and use it. All of these spaces would be well-lit. Obviously, the larger windows making the presence on the street. But if you also can notice, we would propose putting a ring of glass all around those rooms. So whether this is the Hubbardston room that would be shared by the seniors during the day, this would also happen in these other two rooms. The only place that that wouldn't happen would be in public safety, because they would need a stair up to the roof, as well as some mechanical spaces. Next slide. This would be the drop-off. Again, we're segregating drop-off access here from the parking to provide plenty of sidewalk areas, potentially some benching here and everything, so that it's a safe place to use the building. So if I were just coming in quickly for a town meeting, I'd pull in the parking, walk across, be in there. However, if somebody needed assistance being dropped off, or if it was inclement weather, they could pull under the canopy to drop someone off. So this would be the slide if you're coming in on the senior center. And again, whether you come in on the left side or right side, I guess it depends on what side of the town you're coming in from. Next slide. So as if you pass this and you go to the next entrance, next. This would be that other side that would have the public safety. So you'd come down here, this is where I was saying you could develop a park-like area that you could put memorials or other items that you feel are important to the town. This would become the public safety entrance as well. And what this also allows you to do is segregate the building at night, okay? If the police aren't manning it, you know, twenty-four-seven, or if, you know, you wanna only open the senior center side, you could actually segregate the building. Or on the flip side, you could have activities going in all three components of the building without conflicting with each other. But you maximize the functions that don't have to be replicated as a result of that, if you remember, there was common bathroom core in the middle of the facility that all three facilities could use as necessary. Obviously, there's a special one dedicated for the senior centers, and obviously, the police will have a single stall. But we don't have to multiply and duplicate a lot of restroom facilities. That would be the same thing for the heating system, as well as the fire protection system. One system could do the entire complex, as opposed to building separate sections. Next slide. This is again, if you're dropping somebody off at the public safety building, again, approaching the other way. And I think that does it. Okay, so let's talk about budget now. This was for the original layout. You know, so that's kind of off the table right now, as I was told, 'cause that is not moving in that direction. Next slide. This would be option one, which includes all three facilities. It's about fifteen million dollars, per different numbers bouncing around. Clearly, you'd like to beat as little as possible. I understand that. One of the reasons I highlighted the contingency in yellow is because at this early stage, without having borings, without having certain items, we just have to put in a contingency in there just in case. That's about a five percent contingency. If, say, for example, you got rid of the contingency, you're now under the fifteen million dollar number. R F and E is fixtures furnished, areas in equipment. Again, we would just carry that number in the budget, just because you'll have to furnish this new facility, provide any security, things like that. And what I mean by that, like cameras and weight boards and things. Just to go generally how you go through it, A E fees, O P Ms, that's the owner's project manager. By statute, any projects that are over ten million dollars in valuation require an O P M, which is third-party advisor to the town that would review the designer's plans and assist during the construction. And then testing survey, et cetera, as part of the, any building construction. You'd have to take borings. You'll have to test concrete. You'll have to test the steel and all of that. So that's kind of how the breakdown of the numbers... So again, assuming you went with this option or this direction of the option, you know, you're probably looking at around fifteen million dollars, or you can say under fifteen million dollars, you know? And again, this can be refined, and we can talk about different options as we get more into the development of the plans. So for example, right now, the building is proposed to steel, with steel studs. It's built commercially, you know, kind of a commercial grade, so that you easily get a fifty to a hundred-year life out of the building. However, you could reduce some of the costs by eliminating the brick, putting up like a hardy plant, doing a wood structure in some of the areas and stuff. And again, they're just trade-offs. And some require long-term maintenance, where others are less maintenance, but they're at initial upfront cost. So again, if you were to say, how much is option one, I'd say it's around fifteen million dollars, plus or minus. And that depends on the final details and approach that you take to develop the building and its structure. Next slide. If you do just the public safety and town hall, you're about twelve and a half million dollars. And again, you can see the contingencies adjust, because it's a percentage of the overall cost, a little less on furniture, a little less on design fees and everything. And it's a slightly, a smaller building. Next slide. If you do just public safety, you're about nine million dollars, eight and a half to nine million dollars for that facility. And now I think it's open for discussion. I'll be happy to address any questions you may have.
The, just the one that was the last one that said public safety, did that have town offices in it too?
No, no, so there were three options.
No, just public safety and nothing else?
One is all three. Option one, which is town offices, senior, public safety. Option two is just public safety and town hall. And option three is just public safety.
So I'll just add from discussions that I've had with stakeholders, specifically staff. And I know the seniors, the COA is well represented here. We discussed this quite a bit, trying to incorporate them as much as possible. So the idea was, these costs are all in everything. So that's lot design, pavement, fees, like that's what we're facing in terms of cost. And then the reason for that is, we thought the public wouldn't enjoy, say, let's build a ten million dollar project, and then you gotta add a million dollars to do landscaping and design and all that. So these are the, these are the top-level costs. Also, this addresses the fifty-year, thirty, you say thirty to fifty. I like your fifty to a hundred, but I'm a little more conservative. Thirty to fifty-year building, building issue we have here. So this not only addresses the obvious ones, the senior center, the public safety and the town hall, but it also addresses the need for community space, which we don't have here in the community. And it also solves a problem with the library, so it allows them to eventually expand and get grant monies that we wouldn't be able to realize otherwise. So, um, this, this is option number one. In option number two, if town hall and, um, public safety were to move to the site, then you have this, this building or other space for, for senior center. Cause I still believe that we need to address the seniors in this evolution. We talked to them about that particular solution and what that might look like. And then in option three, um, I don't know if you can move all the town offices into where the police are now, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't solve the senior center problem for sure and it may not solve what we need for town hall. And, um, Greg and I went back and forth on costs of renovating this building, but it's probably in the vicinity of one point five to two million to, you'd be, you'd almost be better off raising this building and building a new one.
So.
But then this, I'm s-.
Go ahead.
So the last piece of this is, um, the, the gains from economic development, in my opinion, and talking to my peers and, and others. So the problem that we hear a lot in Hubbardston is there's not a good space for economic development. So you hear like piecemeal, maybe we could put something here, maybe we could put something there. So what this would create is a municipal anchor. So you have the town common and the library all the way to, uh, this new proposed site, which is across from the, from the pallet center, but also the, um, the rec fields. And tied into the town center design and plan, you would have an anchor port or running in that area, which would be hel- heavily invested in by the town and the residents, which would become much more appealing for economic development. So I'm sorry to point at you Greg, I'm really pointing at the map behind you. If you see our kidney bean of space for development in this town, um, that would be almost the entirety of it, would be fully invested and developed by the community if you were to build, say, a municipal complex or some type of municipal building at the end of that quarter. So you could easily point people to investments and say, look, we have two, uh, pillars, to, to borrow your term Greg, two pillars in this community. One being the town common and the library all the way up to a municipal building. So we would point investment in that area while still allowing Hubbardston to be open space and recreational type land that, that people enjoy. I believe that that would be a good vision for economic development in this community. And I'm not ignoring the challenges of buildings and costs and, and the other things that are in this, just laying out what you asked me to do, which is, which is the options for the community.
And I feel that the costs that we presented are reasonable, I mean, they're not super like conservative, they're not super like, oh, let's cross our fingers and hope. For example, Groton, where I, uh, live, they built a new fire, uh, fire station, just a fire station at eight million. Westford just built their new fire station, I think they were like eight and a half, nine million dollars. Groton is building a new senior center that we've designed for them, it's about eleven thousand square feet. That's just under five million dollars. Uh, Groton built a police station right before we moved in or about the time we moved in. They spent about six, seven million on that. And then they renovated the town hall back in the early, you know, late nineties, early two thousand. And they spent about, uh, three to four million dollars on that. So those are costs over time, you know, per, so these are kind of the ballparks where they're coming in, pricing now. We also own another company called BidDucks Online where we monitor pricing that comes in. And this is pretty much what you're paying for a public safety building now. Doesn't just have to be fire, but police, you're paying in the eight to nine million dollar range. Senior centers are running three to five million dollars, you know? Town halls are a little harder because everyone's slightly different. So, I believe you're getting some economy of scales if you combine all the facilities. Because again, you're not duplicating efforts of bringing utilities, you know, foundations and things like that. So if you're looking at this, and that's also why we made the option that if you do build it, you could build it in chunks, if I may use that term loosely, that if you build, let's say, uh, and again, it's, you know, I understand cost or cost, but it's like the senior center could be added or you could just build, I would almost say build the public safety and just build out a shell for the town hall and retrofit the town hall when money's become available. Because at the end of the day, it's going to be cheaper that way, uh, to build the facilities and, you know, take advantage of an economy of scales.
So was there any discussion, I mean, obviously the economy of scale, the best is to just build the whole thing. I mean, this town needs space, we need buildings, this building is thirty years old, it's life's, the original lifespan anyway. What, was there any discussions that if the town voted to do the whole kit and caboodle, which would be great, what do we do with this? Does it get knocked down? Do we, we certainly can't run that building, run this building, you know, that, what, what do we do?
So in, this is just my opinion, this hasn't been vetted, but in my opinion, this would be, i- if you're building, if you're really investing in the town center and people are really gonna be using it for biking and walking and using this space from the library all the way up to the rec field for walking, then you're gonna need more parking for school events. And this would be a perfect place to have municipal parking that ties into the town center design. To also help with the library and hopefully when they expand, they can have more programming and be more of an attraction, given how beautiful that building is. But that's just one option. We did ta- I did briefly talk to the schools, they don't want it. Um, and this building, even if we did nothing, this building eventually it's gonna come down. This, this has, it's, it's in its, it's not in the scary realm, but it's close in terms of, not that it's gonna fall down on us, but liabilities and other things in this building are not good.
We've put a lot of money into this building over the years, I mean, just the years that I've been on the board, I mean, fifty thousand dollars one year to finish the roof and the, and the, the leaking, um, foundation and then windows. And I mean, it's, we've put a lot, a lot of good money almost into bad.
That's, it's both good and bad, that's extended the life of this and allowed us in this town to do other things. But eventually, this building is, it's gonna, it's past its, its time, it passed its time thirty years ago, but it's been able to support the community forever. But just purely symbolic and I'm not, I understand the challenge here and it's, I know that I'm new to this challenge, it's existed since the eighties, is that some people come here to, to talk to the town, to engage with the town, to invest in the town, and they don't know this is the town hall. And they don't know how to get into the police department and we send, spend a lot of time sending people back and forth. And just staff-wise, we're not a big town. To have sick counters to man at all times means that you get employees that, when they're sick, people think that the town's shut down because their particular function isn't available. But if you did this plan and you walked in, I'm sorry. This plan. Or any version of it, if you walk in, we'd always have an employee there. So the town would always be open and get some type of assistance and at least some help. And that would be true on the municipal side and the senior center side. So any resident that comes and engage with the town of Hubbardston would be able to do so. Now, would they be able to have all of their problems solved? No, but they wouldn't go to the library basement and be shut out or, um, or wonder, you know, if, if the police are open because they're just not able to man a twenty-four hour admin desk. So, you know, perfect world, that's kind of, kind of the concept here. And we did think about it.
I had a couple of questions if I might.
Sure.
In terms of your cost.
Mm-hmm.
When you say this is what the going rate right now is.
Yes.
Is, how, how far in the future is that projection so, because everything goes up each year.
Well, yes and no.
Cause this is a project, if it were to happen, isn't gonna happen overnight. So we're talking, I would think we're looking down the road about, you know, several years, et cetera. What's gonna happen with the cost there?
Well, again, it gets, it's always good and bad. So here's what I'm gonna say, my understanding is that this potentially will go to town meeting in May or June for a vote, okay? If the funding were approved, depending how you wanna do it, and I've seen it done in many towns in two-step. One step is to just get the design fees funded and then get the construction fees once you get the bids. That's risky sometimes. The other way is you get all the money upfront and then you just tell the designer, you gotta make it work. And this is the, and I've seen it go both ways and I've seen success with both ways and I've seen, you know, troubles, you know, with both ways. But most of the time, it's a success, you know, either way. If you did do that, and again, I don't know what the exact schedule is, but the anticipation would be that if you awarded this to a designer in June or July, by, uh, January or February of twenty twenty, you would have this out on the street bidding, okay? And the reason being is that is the optimum time to bid here in New England. Everybody's looking for a great project to start in the spring and when the weather breaks, okay? This building should take about twelve months, fourteen months to build. So you would be back into this building come around, um, twenty twenty-one, um, or. Now, I always say, the reason I gave you that long scenario is we've had a great economic boom lately, okay? Uh, but everything goes through cycles. Your crystal ball is as good as my crystal ball. The economy can take, um, starting there, implications with that. As far as construction goes, it's great because we did the municipal gas, uh, wait for municipal gas and light department. The building should've come in at about, uh, nine million dollars, they got their building for seven million dollars because they had bid right after the financial crash in two thousand and eight, okay? People were desperate for work at that time. So, these numbers I think will hold for a year or two, they're not gonna hold out five years, okay? Again, your crystal ball may be better than mine, what do you think's gonna happen in the next twelve to eighteen months? Is the economy gonna start to soften? Doesn't even have to crash, just softening would give you, um, you know, better buying power on the facility. The other thing too is you guys are in a kind of a great location, you're not in the Boston ring, you know? And you're kind of central to Western Park. There's a lot of contractors that would love a project like this, cause this would be considered a, a big project, uh, in this general area. Again, you're not competing against the high-rises and the universities and stuff in Boston. So I think right now you have everything going in your favor as far as, uh, bringing the building in at this number. Again, there's no guarantee, I'm not gonna sit here and guarantee it, but I think between what the economy's doing, the time of year if you bid it, if you do award, uh, a design contract and have it out on the street in January and February, you should do fine with these numbers probably for the next eighteen to twenty-four months.
Thank you. And I have one other question I wanted to ask. Uh, I don't know, this isn't aimed at you so much, cause I don't know how, uh, where you are of this, but, um, we got the land there from Senator Brewer getting the five hundred grand, thousand, half a million for the, a senior center. So any, I couldn't back any option that says no senior center. Now, if that came up and they were trying to go with that, w- w- what happens to, um, legally? What are we responsible? If anything but a senior center is there or, or in the sense of leaving out the senior center, what happens to the position that we're in? Because we got five hundred thousand dollars from the state for the land for the purpose of a senior center. So how can we go along the head with anything and omit a senior center? I just don't see how we can.
So I haven't, I haven't invested in that, cause I didn't wanna spend the cost before I knew the direction I wanted to take. So if we, if, if I knew that we were gonna take the direction, that direction, then I would obviously invest, but I haven't, I don't have.
No, personally, I, I, I agree with all three, you know, having, having the whole kit and caboodle after having tried, we tried twice for the, the other way. But as top, if I was option two goes, that just struck me because I said, I, I just don't see how that could fly with, leaving out the senior center, I just don't see how it would fly at all, but that's just my.
In conversations that I've had, and in, in my opinion, there would have to be a solution for, for our senior population in some way to make any of these plans work, uh, given that it would be difficult to pass on a, on a sunny day, so.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Uh, Greg, I had a question on the, um, or.
Yeah, I'm not allowed to answer you the question, so.
But there was no rendering for the back and I know you said there was like a fifteen to twenty foot, uh, elevation difference. Do you think it would requ- require retaining walls back there for the garage?
No, no, cause basically what happens is, and, uh, Steve is very familiar with this because we're doing the mass DOT headquarters for District Three in Worcester. It's basically on a cliff. Basically what we're using is the building as the retaining wall. So this area right here is basically the back wall that gets buried into the grade and then the truck vehicle. Cause if you go back one slide there, so this is basically the retaining wall.
Okay, so there's none, uh, on that?
So there's none on the side because then the side drops.
It just slopes down.
Right, and then what would be happening here, because you don't have municipal water and stuff, we would bury like, um, seventy thousand gallon, uh, tanks under there for the fire suppression system. See, those are the little things that, you know, people don't anticipate. That alone will probably be running about the sixty to seventy thousand dollar range just for the fire protection system. Good news is it sits high and we don't have to prime the pump. Because over at, uh, Berlin, we actually had to put the pump right over the, uh, tanks and they're literally in the DPW garage underneath the slab there and the pump sits there, cause you have to prime the pump. Where at least we have the advantage of using the hill to prime the pump, so we're not paying for additional pumps and everything to do that, so.
Tab, you had a question?
Yeah, I actually have two, um, did, did the budget include the design phase as well?
Yes, if you know, did they. I did go to option one. Yeah, um, right there, yes, uh, back one, option, option one.
Sorry, I got, I got too excited.
Okay.
There we go.
That's all right, yeah. So right now, you'll see that the budget's seeing at about eight percent of the construction cost. Now, one of the things is, and I'm gonna say this, I'll probably be excommunicated from the AIA and all the other community. Architects like to make a living, okay? This is a reasonable fee, okay? You will have architects and stuff come in here and tell you, it needs to be ten, twelve, fifteen percent of the budget, cause it's all a specialized building. It's not a specialized building, it's a building, okay? There are some specialty components like the toilets and stuff, but there, it's, it's, it's pretty much a straightforward bill. The fee, I believe, is more than reasonable, you know? This fee I've seen go all over the place. Currently, we're working with the town of Montague, the O P M's fee is proportional to our fee like that. We're working with the town of Medway, town of Medway, the O P M is getting paid almost as much as we are for the design, okay? And nobody understands the, so I think this is one of those things that these fees can be negotiated, but I think eight percent is a fair and reasonable, and I'm just walking at eight percent. Cause the other thing to architects like to do is they like to do percentage of the construction cost. So as the construction costs go up, their fees go up. Why, okay? The other thing too, I always say about fees is whether I design for a hollow metal door here or whether I do a gilded gold-plated door, I'm only designing the door once. And just because the hollow metal door costs, say, and I'm just throwing out a number, a hundred bucks and the gold-plated door costs a thousand bucks, why should my fee go up as a result of that? It's, a door is a door is a door, it's just what I'm making the door out of. So that's why I guess, again, I, a lot of my contemporaries would not be happy with me saying that, but I think the fee is reasonable, so.
And that you, did you say also that in addition to this, we would have to still furnish the buildings?
Yes, and that's what this number is for, FFNE.
Okay.
Okay, because I don't know what types of security systems you're gonna have. Some have key fobs, like the camera system, I don't know how many rooms you want, cause as we refer to it as the Hubbardston Room and the Community Room. The Hubbardston Room, which is, if you can go back a couple of slides. One more, there it is. So, this is what we're calling the Hubbardston Room. We have it open to the general public, so at night this door could be closed, boy scouts, girl scouts, community events could occur in that. However, the seniors during the day could use this room for their activities. I know at the Groton Senior Center, they, we actually put a pickleball court in the community room. Shuffleboard, bingo, card, you know, jazzercise, whatever. But they also have the more of what I call a permanent activity room, that, that would be dedicated to their, um, services and everything. But they can take advantage, cause one of the things that I find appalling about most facilities is when people don't maximize the use of the space. I mean, this building should basically be running twenty-four seven. And I mean that in the, the most positive sense. I mean, why shouldn't all these rooms be used? And there was a discussion with like the, um, public safety. Yeah, they have a, uh, a room here for their, um, you know, conferences and stuff when they need. But like if they need training or something, then they just either use one of the bigger rooms and stuff. There's no reason to build training rooms and all these separate rooms, they're only used periodically. And that's why we look at this area as probably the most important portion of the entire building. Because those are shared spaces that the entire community can use and all of the services can use. Because if, for example, the, uh, senior center was having a special seminar on whatever birds or something, cause I know our senior center has, uh, the woman from, they could use this as a classroom even though other operations and stuff are going on. Because that pla- uh, room is probably not gonna be used all day. So they just schedule with town hall. Or if somebody needs a meeting, a blood drive or something like that, use one of these rooms. I mean, that's the way I would see this happening. I also, I don't know what you do about your polling areas and where you have polling. I know the Groton Senior Center was designed so that also, cause that's where I vote, is precinct one, that is where they, they can vote. So that they can close off the senior center, still have it operational for the senior activities, but they can do polling. So for example, this could become your polling booth. That door gets closed, you know? Seniors can still have their activities and function during the day, but this becomes a polling, uh, location. Again, I don't know how the town works here, but that's why I'm saying, the building was intended to do is to be as flexible as possible to get maximum use twenty-four seven if possible.
And then could it be rented out, Ryan, do you know? Like if there was a community room like that, could people choose to rent that out for, you know, my parents' sixty-fifth anniversary party? Can I rent the room, like?
So that would be, that would be a community discussion, but in my opinion, if you were to ask the community to invest in something like this, then they should get to use the community space. So yes.
I think that has to be one of the selling points, the way he was just explaining it, how, how. I think that has to be one of the selling points, the way he was just explaining it, how multiple uses for the rooms, et cetera. I think, I think that it really has to be a selling point.
Well, that was one of the things with the Groton Senior Center that came up, because it went through the gauntlet a couple times as well. Police went up, fire went up, Town Hall and every, the seniors could say enough is enough. They tried to do, but the new director came on and said, with a new approach, and said, yeah, we will open our rooms up to the Cub Scouts and the Boy Scouts or the Squanica running can thing. Squanica running uses their senior building once a year for one activity, okay? The other thing too we did at the Groton Senior Center is we just put in two shower stalls in the main bathrooms to make it an emergency shelter, okay? You don't wanna make this an emergency shelter. The reason I say that is here's your public safety, okay? Here's your administrative, in times of emerging, you don't want, you know, two, three hundred people reporting here. That's what you'd use one of the schools for then. On the other hand, if this were just a senior center, I'd tell you, make it an emergency shelter, you know? But because you have public safety and it doesn't make sense to make this an emergency shelter. But it's just things like that, but the, the community can buy into it because everybody gets an opportunity to use the building, because it does become, as Ryan referred to, a community building. It's not just Town Hall, or it's just not, everybody gets to enjoy the facility.
Is there a, in the senior center portion, is there a commercial kitchen in there too?
There is not a commercial kitchen. The original design, we did have a commercial kitchen, and either I misinterpreted or I, you know, I understand that they have functions and operations and stuff, but they're not feeding hundreds and hundreds of people. My understanding is they feed anywhere from, you know, ten to twenty people at a time. Is that fair? I mean, you would know better than me.
We have functions where we feed a hundred, but.
Okay, but would, do you prepare the food there or do you have that catered typically?
Prepare the food there.
Yeah, okay. Um, we would have to look at providing a bigger commercial kitchen then, um.
Well, I, I only say that because it goes to Deb's point. One of the fire stations, um, in the town I grew up in, uh, in New Jersey, big, I mean, a big city, um, one of them had a community room. It was right in the station. And it had, I mean, it wasn't a huge commercial kitchen. It was probably just this little area here, but it was enough that people rented it out for all kind of family events, and you had a separate entrance from the fire station and the bays, and it was always being rented for some, some.
So, so let me clarify that. See, the way you described it, the commercial kitchen was no bigger than that area, okay? That's not a commercial kitchen. That's a residential kitchen with commercial appliances. Because I can tell you right now, if you had a commercial kitchen, because we've done them at the church, we've done it at the Senior Center, you're talking about a dishwasher that's about fifteen feet long. Trays come in, they send them through, they close the door, two minutes the trays are washed, dried, come out the other end.
All right, how about a big kitchen with commercial appliances?
Okay, there's it is.
That's a big difference.
So, we designed this as a kitchen with commercial appliances so it could support that. But if I were to actually turn this into a commercial kitchen, I'd probably be using all of this office and probably half of that space to turn it into a commercial kitchen if you really wanted to feed, you know, a hundred and fifty people correctly. Because you have sculleries, you have wash, you have, you know, commercial refrigerators and stuff. That's not the impression I got. I understand it supports it, but it's really not that level of food preparation and service. If, if you go back, um, Ryan, to the original plans, okay, whoops, there it is, okay? There's your commercial kitchen. As you can see, that commercial kitchen right there is about the size of the, um, the meeting room.
What's that, this one?
Yeah, it's, yeah, basically from that wall to this wall, this would be the size of a commercial kitchen to feed a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
That, that's what I thought.
You know.
So, a nice kitchen with heavy duty appliances?
If it's a nice kitchen to support, um, if you're bringing in a hundred and fifty people, I'd probably say either get box lunches or, you know, have a caterer, and then you just use it for warming and support, so on that.
I've said this, and I've had, had this discussion with a few groups now. So, do you see the spot above the stairwell on the right side? So, you could extend that, and Greg, I don't wanna speak for you, but you could extend that fairly easily, slide the, slide the stairwell down and create a bigger kitchen, a bigger space for the Senior Center for a reasonable addition of cost, fifty to a hundred thousand or something. It's just as we were having these discussions about moving the building around, the costs just continued to climb. So, this building represents, and in discussions with the council and aging, and they're here, so I'm definitely not gonna speak for them, but in discussions with my staff and both chiefs, basically, people were giving up something, whether it be space or, or a certain comfort or a certain dream that they had of something look like, so that this reality of everyone together could have it. And, and those conversations did happen. No one is getting everything they want. No one's even getting close to everything they want. But everybody's getting something that they think the community could, could rally behind. But we could, if people wanted to, you know, start extending those little corners of the building around, um, if the support was there for cost. It's just at some point, we had to shut the door and say, you know, if we go over the twenty-five million dollar building, no one's gonna say, no one's even gonna look at it. So, the idea was we can change inside this footprint and, and expand it out a little bit or, or whatever we wanna do, but really what you asked me to do was to give you the concept, and that's, we had to put things in here so you could see the actual concept, but this could change a little bit, uh, in each particular area.
And, and like I said, once you get into the design, you could look at like, this is not free, this canopy, okay? I highly, highly recommend that it goes on, but you're probably looking at about a fifty to sixty thousand dollar tag to put this canopy on. That's cheap when somebody first falls or you can't access the building. It becomes real cheap. Like I said, Groton loves it because they can park their vans under there during inclement weather. They don't have to worry about shoveling ice, and I don't know if you have any vans, but the point of the thing is, it'll never be cheaper than to build it when you build the initial building, okay? You know, could you cut off the canopies for the, um, police? Sure, I mean, but they're parked out there now. Obviously, they would have these two spaces, but the other truck, uh, vehicles, the cruisers, they'll have to scrape off the ice and stuff. Is that really what you want your police doing as opposed to responding to, you know? So, there's little things like that that you could trade off. Like I said, you could change from brick to, uh, hardy plank, which is like a cementitious siding and stuff. Nobody will remember it five, ten, fifteen years down the road when they're either replacing or painting it. All they'll say is, why did Ryan and that dumb architect not put brick up like we said to, you know? And it's, so those little things add, but at the end of all, I don't think it's going to substantially increase the price. And that's why I tried to give you a fair and reasonable number, so that if you went to town and said, look at, give us fourteen point nine 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 and we will get you this building, that can be achieved. And that's what I wanted to try to give you a realistic number. And I know that politically, because we all go to, certain numbers sound better than others. Fourteen nine 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 sounds better than fifteen. I don't know why, but it just does, you know, so.
Are there many grants out there available for any of this?
So, I was, I wanna talk a little bit about costs. So, the numbers that I've said to you in this are, that's if we put everything, debt exclusion on the back of residents and we just paid, as New Englanders always do, for, for their municipal buildings. However, I, I don't wanna promise that we can get grants, but we would try. We would try and go to the state and say this is part of our economic development plan. And we try and sell portions of the, I, I said I would put my, a name on any chair for our cost, right? To try and, to try and donate and dedicate some of these building spaces to get, um, our residents who are interested in this to, to give more money or businesses. And then also, um, in twenty twenty-four, you have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of road debt coming off the books. So, that could be leveraged into this project if that was the board's wishes to, to cut into the average taxpayer's cost. Now, that means you won't have that money to do more roads or to do more capital, right? But you could fit about a hundred and fifty thousand of operating into, uh, this to lower the cost while still being able to afford the, the next ambulance and everything like that. So, that capacity's there and we're holding on to it with dear life in order to support something like this. So, we're gonna give the number, I think you should give the number, that's the worst case, but we're obviously gonna try and chip into that to try and help residents.
And what would be the projected cost to run a building like this, uh, a year? I mean, granted, we would not be renting for almost twenty thousand dollars a year space. We would decommission this, decommission the fire station that's falling apart, so we would have some savings there. But what, what would the estimate cost?
So, we, right now, we pay thirty-one thousand to maintain this building and the lower offices of the library, and we pay twenty-two thousand to maintain the rented fire department. So, it's about fifty thousand dollars to run a brand-new building, which we think would be a, a neutral cost exchange, if not a savings.
The biggest, the biggest cost that's gonna be on this is we utilities, okay? Because the, the issue comes up is, now, speaking for myself, we keep our house at a nice toasty sixty degrees, you know? The reason, because I'm never there. We go to bed, we have, you know, down comforts, we sleep, we get up in the morning, we're gone. So, keeping it sixty degrees, then, you know.
Mine's about fifty-eight when I walk in.
Okay, so, see, we've already saved some energy.
Our plants blow and the wind, from the wind coming through the thing.
You know, if you wanna, you know, turn this into a refrigerator during the summer and crank your air conditioner up so that you're at, you know, fifty-five degrees, you're gonna be paying for those. That is probably the single biggest thing that you will, um, see a fluctuation in, and that really comes down to how you wanna manage your building. I've seen people do different things, okay? We would put like VRFs in this, and the reason we do that is that's basically like a, think of it as a heat pump with a central, uh, condenser on the, uh, roof, so that in theory, somebody could put air conditioning on in the Hubbardston Room because there's fifty people in there, okay? While the senior activity room, because there's only five people in there, have the heat on. So, you can run air conditioning and heat at the same time, you know? Where you actually have individual cassettes in the room so that you can control the rooms as needed and on demand, as opposed to just sitting there cranking the whole building up to a certain temperature and stuff. Those are new building automations and stuff that they use, and that's pretty common, so that you can manage it. And again, that's gonna be something that you get over time. We would design this building as net zero. He, he knows about net zero. All net zeros would be, um, net zero is where you can generate your, your own renewable energies onsite to function the building. The reality is a little bit of extra insulation I put in the building, the correct details that we put on the flashing, and again, Steve's very familiar with these flashing detail. It doesn't cost any more at the end, but if it's done right, it saves you a lot on the energy. So, we would say we would design this as net zero. If you came in later on and decided to just put a solar farm up in the back, which I don't think National Grid's all the blocks are closed, you could run this off of, you know, renewable energies, you know? I think the other thing too you may be able to do is get this as a, you know, and again, Dawn not fully aware of it, and I know Ryan would probably look into it as well, is you may become a model for other small towns and where the state may be able to look at this, because again, the, the only reason I keep pointing is Steve. Steve and I are working together on the D three project. Originally, there's an executive, uh, order that said everything has to be LEED certified. Well, when we did District Five for Mass DOT, they were spending one point five million dollars for a plaque. And I joke, for one point four million, I'll give you a nice plaque and you'll save a hundred thousand dollars. And so, we went to the governor and they ran it up the chain to turn it into a net zero building so that the monies could be actually be allocated for renewable energies, and in this case, solar panels, rather than putting a plaque on the building that's meaningless. So, that's why I'm saying there are opportunities with some creativity. You might be able to get a legislator, uh, or something to say, hey, yeah, let's fund this, because this could be a model for future towns, because there are a lot of small towns. And again, I look at Groton, we keep building too many buildings, you know? And we're maintaining all of those buildings because we get to now re-site the police station, you know? And that's one of the things, so. But I think there may be opportunities. Wouldn't guarantee, I would not go in with that approach. It's what everybody, also Groton Senior was able to get, there's a, um, assistant living next to, in West Groton, that's called River Court. Um, they're contributing a hundred thousand dollars towards the programs and stuff. You may be able to find, they're gonna put, the community room is gonna be called River Court Community Room, but for a hundred thousand dollars, maybe you don't care that that, the River Court name is on there.
Would this building need a, like a full-time manager or custodian, whatever you wanna call it? Somebody to take care of the maintenance of the building?
No, actually, you should, you know, where your current, you know, I've had this discussion with Ryan, your current custodial staff, which I guess is one person, um, should be able to maintain this building.
What about mechanical breakdowns? Who's gonna be responsible for?
Um, again, depending on what you put under warranty, there will be building automation systems in there. If people don't muck around with the building automation systems after they're set, the building should run perfectly fine. I mean, other than routine maintenance, you should not have, um, serious maintenance or anything on this building.
Now, I, I missed what you said about solar. Uh, we can, you couldn't add solar to the roof?
No, you could add solar to the roof. The problem is, um, right now, um, well, there used to be what they called S-Rex or power purchase agreements or all sorts of configurations. The S-Rex, the grants and stuff are drying up, okay? And they, because they're just filled. I mean, National Grid in the West, and you guys are considered in the West, has no more blocks on it. They won't take anymore. There's too much renewable energy being generated out in the western sector. So, the only blocks that I'm aware that are open are in ever-source territory towards the city. But you go out to Hubbard, I mean, out to Montague and stuff, they have solar farms everywhere. They just don't need anymore, so, because the grid can't support that. So, that's why I'm saying if you did something like that. However, the big thing now is battery storage, okay? And the state is writing checks all over for battery storage. And so, you may be able to get the grant to say, hey, if you go to the next slide, uh, first one, sorry. Did, whoops, no, back one, yeah. So, back here, if you were willing to sacrifice some of that cold storage area and say to the state, hey, we'll be your pilot for battery storage, give us money, you might be able to get your solar farm on, on somebody else's dime.
What about wind?
I don't know what the, I mean, you know, today was a nice windy day. I just don't know what the study is.
You know, it started, yeah.
Yeah.
George and all the brands are still.
Investigate all the seasons, I promise.
So, I mean, they, they have wind models, and we could talk to one of our consultants. They can tell you almost instantaneously whether this is a good area for wind or not. I just don't know off the top of my head, um, so. But again, I guess what I would say is, I would go realistically with the number, you know, under fifteen million, fifteen million, if you wanna do the whole complex. Plan that, because anything you bring in, you know, budget below or bring in additional grants and stuff, will only look favorably. Because if you go in saying, hey, we think we're gonna get a million dollars in grants and they don't show up, usually the townspeople aren't happy. I know we're not as citizens in Groton when we hear that, so.
And Greg, like you said before, the, uh, spending the money on insulation upfront, that will help you in the long run on your energy cost.
Right, yeah.
Spend, spend more on.
And the interesting thing is because we do these, it's not like I have to put twelve inches of insulation in. There's actually, you can run models to see where there's a diminishing return, okay? So, typically, a building like this might need four inches. In the case of the District Three project, we're putting six inches in. Putting eight, twelve, fifteen inches of insulation in the wall wasn't gonna help the building utilities. So, there is an optimal point where there starts to be diminishing return. Those are all models and numbers that can be calculated very easily. Um, in the case of the District Three, there's triple pane glazing. With as much glass, I would propose put triple pane glazing in there. You know, so there's a little upfront cost, but the overall return on it, they're much greater in, in the long term, so. So, again, those are things that you would actually work out during the design. I was asked by Ryan, because I know you guys have been through a lot of studies, you've done a lot of plans, you know? So, we're actually calling this an assessment. We assess what options you could do. This is preliminary on this. We feel comfortable going in with these numbers and, you know, this plan to say, this is what you can get for this. And now, it's just a matter of whether the town, how far they wanna go, whether this passes or not. And, um, again, you know your town better than I do. I would probably just go in for all the money, because the last thing you wanna do is spend more money on design and go nowhere, especially when you're talking fees that they are. I know Groton gets irritated when they spend money on fees for design and the building doesn't get built. Because they say, why did you just spend a quarter of a million dollars for a design fee? You have better things to do with that money than to just spend it. I mean, the architects appreciate, thank you. I appreciate when towns do that, but that's not, I don't think, the purpose. So, I'd probably just say, go for it all and see what happens. And then the other thing too is I've seen articles get stacked. Again, you know your town better than me. If the, if you go for it all, that's Article One, this is the plan. If you wanna game plan Article Two, you only get the public safety. At that point, you know what flies and doesn't fly. Um, we've done articles like that to see what happens, what's, uh, what the town is doing. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Still a light decision to start off there?
So, what's the next step, Ryan?
So, the next step would be for the board to decide whether or not, uh, we wanna entertain any of these options, and then we would craft a warrant article and start, um, publicizing at least a hearing, at the public hearing, and then promote it. This would have to be promoted, more discussions have to be added, meetings. So, I'd say in the next meeting or two, the board should have a earnest discussion about whether or not to move forward, and start investigating what this would look like, and we'll present all the options, uh, et cetera, or to hold off and do it in the meantime.
Sounds good, all right. Try to put that on the next agenda.
Try to put that on the next agenda.
Next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a nice looking building.
Yeah.
Yes. Different than the, you know. Yeah, absolutely.
It's a nice building. We need it.
Yes.
Buy once, cry once. I'd go for all three.
Yes.
I mean, I know, I've talked to Sergeant Kuchar over there and stuff, and it's like every time something comes up, you know, you say, just a police department or just a fire department, just, you know, just do it all.
Yeah.
Because it's a lot cheaper in the long run. If you try doing something without the senior center, then you try to go back. In the long run, if it ever goes through, you'll wind up paying way more than if you did it the first time.
Absolutely.
And yeah, everything's there, all the equipment, all the guys.
Exactly. It's, it's a lot cheaper to do it when they're all there. And like you said, there might be legal ramifications for the money that was given if there's no senior center there. And I don't know if Greg, I'm sure he probably took into account, but like you say, this property's gotta be worth something afterwards to somebody. The savings not running this building, not running the fire station. I mean, what about where the fire offices are? I mean, I know where the, some of the fire trucks, or is that just the ambulance that's over off of Breezy Hill?
Well, the ambulance, the, Breezy Hill we rent.
All right.
From them. So we don't own that. So we, we rent that, it was like twenty-two thousand or whatever for Breezy Hill. That's, that's where they're. Yeah.
So that's where my office is for sixty-eight, and that building is.
It's no good.
No, it's not.
It's no good. I mean, the fire station in the center of town was the old DPW building, years and years ago.
Yep, yep.
That's fallen down inside. That can't take even the size of the trucks, modern fire trucks.
Right.
Actually, the DPW building was beside it and that's torn down. That was like a woodshed. It was awful.
Wasn't the building inspector's office just being up on the top?
On the fire station.
Yeah, yeah, it was above that. I remember way back when.
But that's all closed off with asbestos now, right?
We have our records up there.
That's our cars. They have our cars up there.
Yeah.
And then this, this was what? This was temporary, like kindergarten rooms or something like that, like back in nineteen seventy?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. So, like you say though, the money you save by not heating and cooling and putting electricity in this. The other one, you get the library now out of there, so they can, they're eligible for their funds.
I agree.
I, 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 that would be, I'd be voting for all three, but I'm only one person.
And I think we should be selling the tile roofs pieces from the.
We're not getting rid of them, actually.
Oh, we're not, okay.
And so we're just replacing some of the asphalt up there. So somebody did question that.
Yeah.
We're, we're getting rid of very few tiles up there. Just the ones that are broken, yes.
Oh, that's good, that's a savings. Just thought that would be a good way to.
Yes, to put the money.
Well, I know Greg, I know Greg had mentioned, I think on the Groton one, they went to certain, like, if it was local banks.
I don't think it's historical, people would want it.
And they got them to donate money and they, I don't know if they put an engrave on like a threshold or a windowsill or something like that. I forgot what the dollar value started at. I don't know if, if any of that would apply here, or if it could be done.
Someone could take an adage on my suit if they want.
I know, I know, yeah. That's what Greg was saying.
Anything to save people money.
Yeah.
The Clark just built a huge thing in Winchandon, a gymnastics center, and they actually had a tree.
Oh, with the old.
Yeah, they had a tree and all these different businesses donated at different sponsorship levels, so that could be something as well.
But you're right. I mean, if we just build one little piece, in ten years, five years, we're gonna be saying, well, we need this now, we need that. I mean, we build it, the town would be great for fifty years.
Yeah, like I say, you mob in, you do it once. If you come in and do that, just one option, then you gotta get, down the road, you gotta go back out. Hopefully you get the money. Let's say you get it. Now you're gonna get somebody to come back in. I mean, remobilization costs, right there, you're paying just for somebody to come back. Just to show up when you're already gonna have somebody there. So, that's my two cents.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
See ya.
All right, more exciting stuff. So you've got, um, in front of you in your packet is the DTLA application, this is District Local Technical Assistance. So what we're asking for is grant monies from MRPC to help write two of our master plan chapters. The planning board picked their chapters that they'd like to focus on, which, uh, right now, they've already completed economic development and open space. And now they wanna look at services and facilities and historic and natural resources. So these are required chapters. Um, looking for the board's support on this application in order to seek grant funds from MRPC to help us write these chapters.
Can you make a motion on that?
I do.
Do you wanna make a motion?
I'll second it.
No, you have to make a motion. I can't make a motion.
Well, make the motion. He can't make the motion, Greg.
Entertain only.
Entertain. To approve the Matitus, uh, Regional Plan and Commission. It's.
I'll second the motion.
DTLA.
All right. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next up, um, in your packet you have a, um, three more police policies as part of Chief Parent's plan to update all of them. So these are being given to you for your review, uh, for a vote at your next meeting in order to, um, either have comment or to waive the notification period. So we are just giving these to you tonight, so no action necessary.
Okay.
Uh, hay account transfers. So, um, we went through the hay licensing, and we are currently out to bid for our hay license. As part of that investigation, we found out that, um, we were looking for some money. So basically, when someone, we bid out a license for this, they pay us for the right to use the, the hay. That hay is supposed to be placed into the Hubbard Pres- Hubbardston Preservation Fund to help fund, uh, different initiatives in town based on recreation and open space. So because of some turnover in positions, um, and nothing to do with, with Lori, but the Executive Secretary handled this a lot, they've been placed in, in different accounts. And we, we found them all, and we'd like them to be placed all back into the Hubbardston Preservation Fund so they can use those funds for their initiatives. So the, um, two transfers that we're looking to approve, and accounting will do this, if the Board of Selectmen is in favor of it, is to move seventeen fifty-five from open space to the Hubbardston Preservation Fund. And these are already deposited monies that are just sitting there because they're not supposed to be in that particular fund. And then seventeen fifty-five from Selectmen's miscellaneous account to the Hubbard- Hubbardston Preservation Fund. Um, and if you so choose, there are motions there for you in order to, for us to accomplish this. This is also approved by the Open Space Committee and certored by all associated boards.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve moving, transferring the money seventeen hundred and fifty-five dollars from the open space donations to the Hubbardston Pres- Preservation Fund.
A second?
Yes, second.
All's in favor?
Yes.
Yes. I also move transfer fiscal two thousand nineteen seventeen fifty-five, seventeen hundred and fifty-five from the Selectmen's miscellaneous to the Hubbardston Preservation Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. The next item, a lot of important housekeeping items. So, uh, a couple meetings back, we gave you the Town of Hubbardston Housing Production Plan. So this had been, uh, reviewed and updated in two thousand seventeen. Uh, the redline version was given to you in your packets. The planning board has taken this back up under the direction of Alice, um, in some of their affordable housing initiatives, Alice and Tom. Um, so they sent to you this redline version that had been looked at a couple years ago, but it had never been submitted to the state. So they wanna submit this to the state in order to, uh, start on their affordable housing efforts and to have a published housing production plan. So if the board is comfortable with the edits, then this would be, uh, approved for them to send to the state. Or we can continue to look at it, or you can make suggestions and send it back to the planning board.
Do you want me to have a motion to approve the housing production plan?
I make a motion to approve the housing production plan. As presented. I'm a little confused. Um, you said they made some changes that we're supposed to.
So they had looked at it in two thousand seventeen and provided some edits, but it never, the, the final push, which is to be given to the state, it never happened. So it was assumed that it was given to the state, that red, the finalized version.
Okay, so, right, so, okay.
So we're trying to formalize that so they can turn this in, basically.
Got you. I'll second the motion.
All right, all of them in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, and the, and the last thing we have is at, um, a previous executive session, we discussed a, um, formalizing a classification and grade and wage plan for our non-union employees. At the time, the, the board voted to approve this plan. I just wanted to do it, just being thorough and open session. So it displayed the, it's the same with no changes, classification and grades. And then the, uh, non-union pay scale to take effect on July one, pending town meeting vote and appropriation of money, of course, for FY twenty twenty.
Then I would make a motion to accept the classification grades for the non-union personnel as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Budget.
Well, it's hard to compete with buildings, but this is normally a big one. So, um, just some general comments and then I'll get into the specifics of my recommendations to you for our operating and capital budget. So this is available online on the Town Administrator's webpage, uh, under Budget and Finance for people to review. And we'll also be sending it out, um, to the public for their consumption and to the Finance Committee tonight. So the purpose of this budget book was to create more clarity and transparency for residents. Uh, we're moving towards GFAO standards in terms of budget book, uh, hoping to make that jump with the staff next year to what they believe is that we should be the standard for a town budget book. That's why you're seeing some moves towards, uh, some formality with this book. Table of contents provides some transparency. Just gonna move page by page. The introduction is, um, it just allows a first-time reader of the budget to understand the process that based on our charter, we follow certain timelines, like I'm to present this to you ninety days before town meeting. And that, uh, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee recommend budgets to town meeting. And then town meeting approves them. So mine is a recommendation or basically what we'd call a foundation budget for you to approve. And then the next section allows the reader to understand how to read this budget, which goes from the summary level or the highest possible level down to the line item level, depending on how someone wants to digest it. Community profile puts information into context, who we are and why we have the budget that we have. And then the budget planning calendar shows the residents how we move through the budget process. Some key dates coming up, April first, our warrant closes for town meeting. We'll discuss April sixteenth. We're gonna move that meeting because of, uh, school vacations. But the public budget hearing will either happen on the eighth or the twenty-third, and then your, this board will vote on the budget on the twenty-ninth, if we maintain this calendar. Some of the goals we've discussed is to put the operating budget into a five-year context for all planning, which we're moving towards through the year piecemeal, but will now be part of one consolidated effort every year. And then to follow financial management policies. So we're trying to move towards these standards over the next five years to include our savings, our free cash generation, how we project revenues, what we spend on capital, what we maintain for debt, and what we have in reserve. So since people are the largest driver of our budget, this budget book includes our organizational chart. As best described in visual form. And then on page nine, um, it starts my message. So this is the, basically the highlights of the budget, or, or what I find to be the most important. That we're aligning our values with best pe- financial practices, that it's goals-based. It increases our ability to provide public safety and reduces our reliance on one-time revenues for, uh, the operating budget. Overall, it's a two-point-seven percent budget increase, which is a full percentage point less than last year's approved budget. With a two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar increase in cost. Then I get into detailed discussions about revenue, for those who wanna consume that. Really highlighting that we wanna reduce our reliance on free cash. And then my expenditure discussions, uh, talk about our commitment to our students. Areas where we got significant savings, which was retirement, dispatch, veteran service, and health insurance. Those are all probably one-time savings. And in the last year, I've worked to reduce some of those bigger savings items, which means this budget is really bare bones. There's just not a lot to pick from anymore. And then that, um, this budget shows a five-year financial forecast, which really gets into, um, our continued structural deficit. Although we've made some progress on what was once three, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, so we've been able to carve that down into the low twos. And then the capital improvement plan, I took the lead on this this year with the help of UMass. But this will be moving towards a CI, CIPC or Capital Improvement Planning Committee next year. So this budget is balanced and impactful, um, and very much a team process. So I wanted to thank Sandy, Diane, Joyce, and the Loris, Lori and Lori, for helping me to create this budget. Um, it'd be impossible without my team. And now we'll get into the actual budget items.
It's a great book, Ryan.
Thanks. So overall, uh, we talked about how this is a nine-point, nine-point-two-six-eight-million-dollar budget. A two-point-seven-one percent increase with two-hundred-and-sixty thousand recommended for an increase and twenty-one thousand warrant article appropriation recommendations. So these are all recommendations. This chart that I'm showing you up on the, on the screen shows thirty-three percent of our budget goes to town departments, fifty-eight percent goes to the schools. That includes Monty Tech and debt. Six percent goes to our indirect costs and three percent is what we maintain for debt service. So the schools budget, five-point-three-six-three million of our budget is for, um, our Hubbardston schools. This is a three-point-three percent increase. Again, this is my recommendation. So this has, uh, Quavon Regional School District Assessment at a little over four and a half percent. And Monty Tech, actually, we just got their assessment and it's less than last year, which was a big gain for us.
What about that, um, this paper we saw at the last meeting?
So that's the challenge in this budget?
Have you seen that, Mike?
Which one?
This Quavon's, uh, they've jumped at eleven percent.
Oh, I, yeah. Right.
So I compared, so in, in, my budget that I'm recommending to others, this is recommended and can change over time. So I looked at a, a five-year history of spending and what I thought was a reasonable estimate of what their costs would be. Uh, they refused to give me a number that they thought was, because of where they are in their budget process. So I budgeted where I thought we would be. That initial assessment is their first swing at it, almost twelve percent increase. So to put that into context, it's a five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar total budget increase for just the schools. And this budget recommends a two-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-dollar increase with schools for everybody combined. So if we were to get an eleven percent assessment, it would be twice as much as I'm recommending we spend for the entire town, just for the schools. And then we'd have to layer on the, um, the town. So I looked at last year, their initial sub-budget subcommittee, which is the only thing I have to go on, which I found on their website, is, um, the same as it was last year. And then they settled in around five and a half percent for an assessment increase last year. So it's a really long explanation of, I'm not sure where they're gonna end up. They could stay at twelve percent. They could go lower than last year at four percent. I, I don't know.
But why, why, I always wonder this every year. Why waste their time and effort and money putting out twelve percent assessment increases? Where they know it's not feasible for the towns to, to, to do that?
Ryan, in your experience, how do other towns, uh?
Uh, normally there's a collaboration between town and school, um, whereas I, I'm, I'm an education guy. I believe you shouldn't meet your obligations to your schools. Um, but there has to be an appetite in the, in the towns to spend that type of money. We would almost have to close the town to pay for that type of increase. Or you'd be looking at somewhere in the vicinity of three to four hundred dollars per household for that type of override. So if there's an appetite to fund that, that's understandable. I don't like to give you a bu- like, so the flip side would be me presenting you a budget that's a six percent increase, that adds three or four town staff. That, um, that really hits like our road maintenance problems and stuff like that. I would love to do that. I would look like an absolute hero. There's no way that you guys wouldn't fire me after I presented that budget, so I don't. I give you a reasonable, um, reasonable increase based off what we can afford. Schools are a little different. The governor's budget was terrible to the Quavon region. They have a real revenue crisis. But their budget right now represents revenue plus increases, which is just, um, it would be unsustainable for us. So if this isn't me telling the schools what they should spend, it's just putting that into context and trying to forecast what we're gonna be able to do. Because no, nobody likes to be budgeting under the gun, so.
Why, why was the governor's budget terrible to Quavon region?
Uh, there was a large investment in, um, urban school districts, which is good. It was much needed. There's not a school district that, that believes that that shouldn't have happened. But the, the way that revenues came to rural school districts, especially regional schools west of four ninety-five, was really terrible. Also baked into our number, we had a five percent increase in our minimum local contribution, which is, um, a significant jump in our expenses. Although we had a small decrease in students, those two usually combined to increase your. Although we had a small decrease in students, those two usually combined to increase your assessments. So I expect to be on the high end of the assessment scale because of that. But these are, um, even Barry can't withstand a five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar increase at nine percent, which is where they're at.
I mean, new brain trade, eleven, eleven-point-six-five percent, they can't, they can't absorb that.
So, so these are really early numbers, I, I don't want to chicken little this. Um, I know the school committee's meeting on the twenty-eighth and we should have a much clearer picture, but I had to present the budget as I saw it in context, but while also understanding that I owe you the most recent information from the schools.
So they claim that they're waiting for the number from the state, correct?
So, they are. So they, the, the House budget and the, and the Senate budget should, in my opinion, if it doesn't, everybody's in a lot of trouble, but restore some of the revenue side. And then the school committee will have to decide, uh, this represents, their total budget went up five-point-six-eight percent or somewhere five-and-a-half percent range, whether or not they wanna stay at that level and have the low revenues, uh, which would drive the assessments. So we care about the assessment because that's what impacts our operating budget, but they have multiple levers that they're weighing right now. So, not great news, but it's early. And, so just continuing on, insurance, um, we saved a lot of money in indirect costs this year. I don't know if that's sustainable year over year, but we had less than a point-zero-four percent increase in indirect costs, which was good and helped us solve some of the other problems in our budget. In debt service, uh, we're still absorbing the, um, the fire truck, which is brand-new, which you'll see on the street these days, and the, um, dump truck, the last dump truck that was approved. Uh, there wasn't a funding source identified for that, meaning a capital exclusion or anything, so we have to roll that into the operating budget, so we're, you'll see in the debts service how we did that and how next year there'll be a spike, but we're dropping something off debt, so we'll be e- evening it off.
Mm-hmm. So the fire truck came in last week?
Yeah, it's here. I was promised a ride, they haven't given me one yet. Uh, so capital improvement, this is everything capital. We spent five-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, that's three-hundred-and-ten thousand we carry in school and town debt. Plus, you'll see I'm recommending two-hundred-and-sixty thousand in pay-as-you-go expenditures out of free cash and stabilization. And then we only have two known warde- warrant articles at this time, that would be fifteen thousand for the senior tax work-off and six thousand from the cemetery commission for, uh, maintenance equipment. Uh, they haven't gotten maintenance equipment in over a decade, so I did include my recommendation for that.
Is, do they have money in their own account, the se- cemetery commission, that they can use, or?
Um, not specifically for capital, and it gets confusing with their trust because you can only spend money on each particular cemetery, so that's, I don't know for sure. But we would definitely investigate that before. Any final recommendation? So, up on the screen or in your book, you'll see projected revenue. Uh, most of our revenue comes from taxes, we aren't recommending, we are recommending using all of our levy capacity, but not an override. We are projecting seventy-three thousand, five hundred new growth. This is forty thousand from what we call regular new growth. And then the remainder of that is the solar product and Williamsville Road, about half of it. So the assessors are comfortable that we can bill for half of that new growth.
So like thirty-five?
Thirty-three and change.
Thirty-three. Ryan, what else is, uh, what's the total for solar? Do you have that per year?
For all of our solar combined?
Yeah.
I'd have to look that up.
Because that's a big number, right? I mean, there's.
It is. So, and I had some, I did a lot of educating myself on this, especially at the MMA conference, and the, the way that assessors and accounting is, are looking at these solar projects is that a lot of them, they expect to be renewed at the end of twenty years, which, which wasn't in my thought process in my first.
Yeah, some people thought they were gonna clean them all up, but they may re- like you said, renew.
So they may renew, or, um, by that time, the rest of your levies should have raised to the level where you're not gonna see these massive drop-offs. Now, that's looking at a crystal ball fifteen, twenty years down the road. But everyone I've talked to is recommending that, that this is actual new growth that you should use and you shouldn't constrain, especially a t- type of Hoverson community, so I, I am changing my recommendation a little bit to you to include that. If the whole thing came online, we'd have another thirty-three thousand to use in this operating budget, which could help save schools or other things.
See, I, I don't know if people realize how much money we're getting from these solar farms per year. I mean, I think that's important to, um, let people know because, you know, you may drive by and just see it for a second, like the one on sixty-eight, but the amount of money that we're getting, i- i- I think offsets seeing something for a minute, you know, hours, for a second when you drive by.
So, a good, I like context, a good, when you see a solar farm, it's probably funding one of the police officers every year, or something along those lines. It's about that level of revenue. Doesn't mean that, you know, we should just put solar farms everywhere, but.
No, yeah. Well, I think they're coming to an end anyways, like Greg said.
We do need growth in this community. Um, state aid came in at four-point-seven-nine percent. If you look at our revenue lookback that I provided, um, that's pretty consistent with recent numbers. Uh, we didn't get the ten-point-five percent that we got three years ago, but it's still early. We can still shake the trees at the State House. And then local revenue. So last year, we projected our local revenues, so I excluded all one-time revenues, 'cause those don't repeat, at one-point-three-one, three-one million. One-point-three million, we'll say. Um, they came in at exactly that number last year. So that's good and bad. We hit the actual revenue projection, but if it didn't, we would've had a, a hit on our free cash. And you really wanna project a little bit under to generate just a little bit of free cash, you can spend two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand a year on, on capital. So, our policies are trying to walk that va- number back to ninety percent, but I don't wanna strangle the budget, so I'm recommending this year, given any changes with schools and, and the like, that we start at ninety-seven percent and just walk it back to ninety percent over the next five years. So this does give us thirty thousand less in this operating budget, which we've been over, able to overcome with some cost cuts. And then free cash. So we did need to put a hundred thousand in free cash in this operating budget. Last year, we did third, a hundred-and-thirty-three thousand. And if everything holds and revenues come in higher than we're projecting here, then we should be able to walk that back to seventy-five, which is my original goal. Uh, that is a real soft spot in the, in the budget and something worth discussing and debating. Okay, the next section, and I'm not gonna get repetitive, even though some of these sections are, so the rest of it should move fairly quickly. Is employees by department. So this is what we are recommending for employee levels. Uh, we are maintaining all of our employees, but in order to accommodate the, um, the wage plan that was passed tonight and previously discussed in the executive session, we are cutting hours in some departments. The biggest cut is to, uh, the council and aging director, which I spoke to her about. The reason why that cut is so deep is the, uh, wage increase is that high, so, um, our council and aging director is not paid even close to what our peers make, or the peer of that person would make. They normally make, uh, close to twenty dollars an hour, and we had a budget this year of fourteen-seventy-two, so we need to fix that, especially if we're gonna make that a sustainable position. So the only way to do that is to kind of phase it in. So, you can obviously change any of these levels. This is my recommendation to you for what we could handle. There'll still be a cut in service, uh, while still taking on that wage plan, and then perhaps targeting this in the future to restore. So overall, it's about a third of an employee. Doesn't sound like a lot, but we don't have a lot of employees. So then, the next section is department summaries, and I'm just gonna hit some highlights. So you have, um, in terms of department expenditures, our largest department is obviously in education, and then followed by, um, public works. And public safety are our next largest. And then we have, um, growth management, or general government, growth management, resident services, and then indirect costs. So the biggest change in, um, general government specifically, which is your town offices, is we're, um, Lori actually did a great job contractually saving us some money on copying and telephone contracts, so that dropped some monies. We did increase our software budget so that we could have a newer, better, more robust software. But we're able to save some money with accounting and other, our regional contracts, um, by changing some of the structures. Public safety, so this is, this is definitely an area that the, the board should look at. So it's a big increase for police. So about, and I can get to this specific, so about four years ago, it was proposed that we cut an employee from this department, about seventy thousand in savings. And then, at the next town meeting in the fall, the public voted to put about half of that back in, about thirty-five thousand. So that structural deficit remained in the police department, it was just never funded. So through some, some creativity, been able to kind of get to the number every year, but it's sort of come due. So this year, you heard me talking in our quarterly reports about how we're gonna have to inject some money into the police. We've really been able to control that cost by, um, basically dropping our police officers down to one per shift in certain shifts, less, they're all dangerous, but less dangerous shifts. In order to try and keep that number, because that, that's what was appropriated and we only have so much in reserve. We're also not able to do any community policing because of that, so that would be roadblocks and, and different types of patrolling efforts that people like to see the police doing. So, this, uh, increase would not only fund the, um, union contract, but it would also get us to a point where we could not be so reliant on one-person shifts, um, in budgeting and filling in some of that structural deficit. And it builds capacity for a discussion in two to three years of moving away from part-time officers to a full-time staff, 'cause part-time officers are unreliable in terms of budgeting. So right now, we're getting about sixty to seventy-five percent of our shifts covered, which we budget for, and obviously full-timers are more expensive than part-timers, so that's also causing some of the budget constriction. We're not just like throwing money at it, though. Um, we have, uh, discussions that you'll see later about ways to try and entice our part-timers to work more. So we're kind of coming at it from both angles. Hopefully, we have this great improvement in our, in our part-time hours. It's unlikely, but hopeful. And we won't need as much money next year for police.
Have we reached out to all the part-ta- or the chief has reached out to all his part-timers?
Yeah, so they're actually putting in for a lot of shifts, but they're putting in for the same shifts that the full-timers want. 'Cause they work full-time in other departments, a lot of them, so we're not, just not getting the coverage. So we end up paying, you know, and, and, and glad to have sergeants on, they're, they're most experienced and they're very good, but they're the most costly, a double versus having a reserve officer at the regular rate. And then fire, uh, that increase includes the, uh, fire contract that, uh, will be approved at a later meeting for the, the new fire union contract, and then, um, also to fund the rest of the new paramedic position, so that cost levels off after this year. Uh, growth management, you just see a big reduction in, um, in the cost of the regional agreement with Gardner that we signed. And then in planning, there's an additional economic development coordinator position, so that one that was grant-funded, we're able to actually almost squeeze a full another year out of that grant if we inject about three thousand dollars per town to continue to fund that position and see where that goes for one more year. So I thought it was a worthy recommendation, given the low cost. We talked in detail about the schools. In public works, the only thing that wasn't level-funded, besides wages, which are contractual, is we added some money for, uh, culvert repair and road maintenance. Tucking a little around, around ten thousand dollars in order to, um, try and help the roads a little bit. And not always rely on the, uh, capital budget. Then residential services. So the big news here is, and veteran services, uh, I hope my credibility is strong there. We just don't have the, the, uh, customer level, which is good, uh, which would be veterans in need to support the sixty-five thousand dollars in that budget. We're probably gonna come in at under thirty thousand in benefits this year, so I'm comfortable recommending a thirty-five thousand dollar budget level, so it's a huge savings. So although you see a big negative on veterans, it's not 'cause we don't care about our veterans, it's because we are taking care of the ones we need, and we don't need to carry that much budget, money in the operating budget for something that doesn't exist. It's important for me that everyone knows that I'm not cutting money to veterans. Not my style. Uh, we talked about indirect costs. So the next section is the capital budget. So it's a six percent investment in capital, two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand in new purchases. We'll be asking the board and, and the town to support using fifty-eight thousand from the capital stabilization fund in order to fund this very aggressive first year. Two-hundred-and-four thousand in free cash. So that would keep our stabilization fund at one percent, which is our reserve policy. So we'd still be above our, our target, but using some of that money to buy the items that are being recommended this year are pavement ro- pavement roller with trailer, a dump truck with plow. That would be a used dump truck, it was gonna be two-hundred thousand, and Travis found a, a comparable long-term solution for ninety-five thousand. Uh, the library is asking for eleven thousand to repair their, the annex roof. Three thousand for police handguns, forty-six thousand for a police cruiser. Thirty, forty-three thousand in school, uh, capital to include cafeteria equipment and a water pump booster system. And thirty thousand to replace our seven-year-old computers here in the town offices. The rest of the capital budget is items that are not coming from the operating budget or other sources, but just interesting to note that there'll be seven-point-five million in expenditures in Hoverson. Not supported by, well, not directly supported by the taxpayers. Okay, the next section is the debt service. So you'll see in this section, the third, so you have the road project, which has been around forever, and ends on FY twenty-three, that's a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand a year plus interest. So that's where you're gonna get your biggest capacity building. So if you look in FY twenty, the municipal total, it's two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand in debt, and FY twenty-four, it's seventy-four thousand in debt, which gives you about two-hundred thousand dollars in buying power, which you could dedicate towards a building. Or other things. The dump truck comes off next year, which is good timing, bec- the, the two thousand and fifteen dump truck comes off next year because the fire truck and dump truck that was borrowed for in seventeen and eighteen, uh, is coming due in terms of a permanent borrow, and we'll add and recommend for that next year to absorb that, that big interest hit. Keep us level. And then this is our last year on the police cruiser, which frees up a little bit more capacity next year. Green repair is this, as a school debt we've been carrying for a long time and will carry for another long time. Okay, and then how does this affect our town reserves? So right now, we're at three-hundred-and-ninety thousand in our stabilization fund, so this budget, uh, doesn't pose putting anything into it, except for, I will say, if the library roof comes in the way it's supposed to, the town supported a hundred-thousand-dollar capital exclusion for that. We're gonna use about sixty thousand of that for the roof. I would recommend asking the taxpayers to put the rest of the forty into savings for future projects, which would allow us to save a little bit while still paying for capital. After using some money from municipal capital stabilization, we'd still be at a hundred thousand or one-point-zero-eight percent there. We generated four-hundred-one thousand in free cash this year. Our target's five, we're at four-point-three-three, so backing the revenues back should help us get to that five percent level. And our total reserve is just below our target of ten percent, or between our target of nine and eleven. Uh, nine-point-six-three. And it's important, the next section is the financial forecast. So this is just here to show, I inputted my proposed budget for FY twenty into the forecast. Uh, that was presented to you in December, and this is what remains. So next year, we're looking at if revenues are conservatively estimated and expenses grow like they have been, about a two-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-dollar deficit. Which is a lot less than the three-hundred-and-fifty-ish last year, but it still remains an issue. We have to either grow revenues, either by additional taxation or a big investment in economic development. Which everyone obviously prefers the latter, so trying to recommend ways to do that, while still keeping the character of Hoverson. So what's next? Addressing the Quavon Regional School District budget, however that comes in. And then, if we get more monies, which is always fun, um, thought experiment, we would want to reduce the free cash operating budget, and then continue to drop our revenue estimates so we can meet some of these long-term financial goals. So the very last section of the budget is the, the specifics for people. This first one is the summary. It shows, uh, that this is a balanced budget and where all revenues and everything are coming from. For those that are interested in seeing it, I'd gladly explain it at any level anyone wants, and then byline item with percent increases across the entirety of the town.
Very thorough, Ryan.
Yes, there is.
He didn't sleep for weeks.
Lot of work.
So what's next? The Finance Committee is meeting on the twenty-seventh. They will get this budget material and start their recommendation process. They've already asked for a couple departments to meet with. And this board can decide if they want people to come in and talk about the budget with a target of, um, the April twenty-third public hearing and then an April twenty-ninth vote on this budget. So, I can entertain questions now, or you can send them to me, or we can have another meeting and discuss them however the board wants to continue. Some people have already sent me questions.
I'd like to go through this and read it.
Makes me happy. I made my wife read it, she fell asleep.
All right, library roof contract.
Okay, so this, uh, this is in your packets, the library roof contract. Okay, so this, uh, this is in your packets, the library roof contract. Um, it is exactly as proposed in the bid package and presented before, just calling it up here. Um, it has been vetted by town council.
That's your insurance, go back.
Go back?
So we did review their performance bond, their performance bond is the standard, we reviewed, reviewed their insurance with our insurance company, that is also the standard. Uh, the architect reviewed this as well, and this contract has been signed by, um, Titan, who was awarded the bid. Our accountant and town council, um, it being to form. So we're looking for your approval to have me sign this document and start this project.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to approve, uh, Ryan to sign the contract for the library roof.
Second emotion?
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
It's gonna be a good project for the town. Okay, and then, no one wants to hear me talk anymore, so I'll go quickly. I've talked about the budget process, um, and, and what's coming at detail. The annual town meeting warrant, this is still open, it closes on April first, and if the board has any recommendation for warrants, if you could send that to me, um, I will get you a good draft on April, our April one meeting to review. Uh, that initial draft, I'll go over each article that's been represented, we don't have, we have two submissions so far, so. People do normally wait till the end, so we're, we're looking for people to continue to submit those. Uh, shoo, shoo. Library roof procurement, we talked about that, fire negotiation, we are, um, good with council and good with the fire union, just waiting for the next meeting to sign the CBA. Which is, is good, we'll have labor peace for a full, full year after that's complete. Our, this was from last meeting, but our all department and all board reports are available, uh, it's always on the website, we put them up on social media. Uh, good for, uh, people to see what the town boards and departments are doing. The Country Hen Scholarship is open, it's a thousand dollars, I challenge many people to apply for that and, uh, reap the benefits of that reward. We currently have an opening in the public works department, um, we've had two applicants so far, looking for a couple more. We'll, we should be doing those interviews in the next week and hiring a new department worker. The, uh, worker we did have left for a, a better opportunity, um, for, for that individual, so we.
He was also mechanic, right?
He was the mechanic once, so Eric.
So, are we looking for that in terms of the applicant?
So Eric moved into a driver laborer position and we hired, we backfilled the mechanic, so this is a driver laborer position.
Mm-hmm. So. Mm.
Uh, and then we also have some vacancies on the board of health and the capital improvement planning committee. So for those who are inspired by the board's work, um, come join the effort. And lastly, I'd like to thank Bobby, uh, Bobby works in our, on our finance team, works for, um, our treasurer collector. She's been a, assisting Jenny Daniels, who had a beautiful baby girl, by the way, if you didn't know that yet, so congratulations to Jenny. Uh, so she's gonna be filling in that role of the assessing assistant until we hire, we plan on hiring sometime in April or May. So we're gonna let that position stabilize a little bit, and Jenny's moved on, as we told you, to a full-time position with RRG. So the position is covered, training is happening now, and, and Bobby's one of our most capable employees, so should be a pretty seamless transition, and congrats to Jenny. And then some upcoming topics, the planning board and the finance committee have both completed their benchmarking discussions. So they're gonna come in in a group session with you and talk about how we can benchmark ourselves. We'll put this sometime in May after the, um, the budget has calmed down. And then on March eighteenth, we're planning on having that road maintenance, um, that first draft of the road plan presented to you. And then inviting the public in a hearing setting to discuss the road issues as, as you wanted. So Travis projected out six years, his road plan, we're gonna present that to you in full. And this is his, um, best and strongest effort in terms of how we're gonna place monies for road maintenance. And then invite the public to come and comment, and we encourage the board to, to hear some of the comments and then to digest the plan, and then we'll finalize it by the end of the spring. That is my updates.
Let's just change an appointment then.
So these are, Ryan, and I apologize, I'm, have like, have a cold, so, but, um, so change an appointment, he asked if it was something that I did, and, and it was, I, you know, you see the name Berthium and it's all over, and it was just for, uh, voting. And, and so I just assumed when it was Berthium that it was Donnie, and it was not, it's James, um, James is a member of the Lions Club. So he's already talked to Joyce, and so we just need to change that appointment for him. Chuck Reed, uh, for the finance committee, and then Dave Conahan for the capital improvement committee, there's no vote on there, as he's recommended.
So Chuck, Chuck filled our final position on the finance committee and was recommended by the finance committee for this position and went to their last meeting. Uh, Dave was, um, was nominated by the finance committee directly to the capital improvement planning as their representative, just letting you know that.
So we need motions for?
Need a motion for A and B.
A and B.
A and B, okay. I move to, um, correct and ch- to change the appointment from Representative Donnie Berthium to James Berthium. What's the, uh?
That's the Memorial Day Committee.
Memorial Day Committee.
Memorial Day Committee, yes.
The Memorial Day Committee, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Make a motion to, uh, approve, um, Chuck Reed's appointment to the finance committee.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. And then we have a part-time mart driver.
Yes, so we did have a mart driver recently leave, I put the ad out and we luckily found Donald Tardy in a short amount of time. He was already, um, with mart, so he was all mart certified, so he was ready to come to us and start. Um, I've talked to Sharon, he's been a great addition, so we're just looking to waive that wage authorization for him.
Waiving the authorization.
Yeah, waive the notification.
Yeah. I move to, uh, waive the wage, uh, notification authorization on Mr. Tardy's part-time mart driver position.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. So I know Dan usually has the task force and town center committee updates, but.
The only thing from town center, Jeff went with me, we presented the town center project to the MPO last Wednesday, and I thought it was a pretty successful presentation.
Yep.
I think very competitive with the four peers we have, so right now, the project is on for FY twenty four as a placeholder, and we're hoping they move that up. So worst case, uh, we believe the town center will be on the tip twenty twenty four, it's likely to move up a couple years, so. The absolute worst case, four years away from the town center project.
Any word on when they're gonna do sixty eight north, does that come in this summer?
It's gonna be bid this spring, and they might start some of the work in the fall to be completed in the spring of twenty.
Okay.
But it, people will see the markings and the flags and the initial work this year.
Any matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair tonight, buddy?
Uh, Ryan, did they f- trim the tree on the common yet for the flag?
They did, um, we got a donated flag, flag is flying, we believe it's protected and good to go.
All right, hopefully it didn't get, uh, destroyed today with the wind, huh?
Hopefully nothing.
Oh my god, blew the chimney cap right off my.
Did it?
Yeah, so now I was gonna have to fly it through the yard today.
Uh, we don't have any public or press here, so we're gonna have to move into executive session.
Thank you. Make a motion to move, uh, to adjourn to executive session, and with, and, I have to read all this?
This is the three.
With, yeah, with the intention not to read.
It's just, yeah, just, just for reason number one, Lisa.
Okay, for, um, for reason number, okay, executive session, uh, for reason number one. To discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges against a public officer, staff member, or individual. Also, uh, for reason number three, correct?
I would vote on each one individually.
Okay.
All right, so, um.
Jeff?
Yes.
Michael, yes.
Yes.
Just need a second.
Okay. Oh, I'm second, yes, okay, never revoted.
Yes.
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 Uh, move to, also, in, in, in executive session, to, and reason three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the CHISO declares.
I declare.
New England Police Ponevelin Association, the local zero nine two, and the Town of Hubbard City Police Department.
You have a second?
Yes, a second.
Jeff? Michael, yes.
Yes. And also an executive session, I moved for reason number seven, to comply with the provisions of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, general privacy.
Second?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff? Michael, yes.
Yes.
Okay, with no intent.
A- and also I move with, after executive session, we will adjourn with no intent of returning to the public open meeting.
Okay.